That tells you what to do.
That's right.
I'm not doing anything, I must have been vegging out.
This is the new stipulation.
So, at the AESI Gala, I don't know if you heard, we won a raffle. Fifty-two bottles of wine.
Call me.
Call me.
The wine tree, I bet on that every day.
Good evening and welcome to the April 16th, 2014 Ashland Board of Selectmen meeting. We are being telecast, broadcast live by WACA TV, so just that you're aware of that. And if anyone else has a camera or is recording, if you could let us know. If not, would you please join us as we stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
And the flag got moved and not put back. Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who says humans preach this?
It got put there during another meeting, and I was watching the planning board on Thursday and realized it had not been put back, so we need to make sure it gets put back. Okay. The next thing I'd like to do is just take a moment of silence in recognition of the one-year anniversary of the marathon bombings yesterday, please. Great, thank you. Our thoughts go out to the families, but our thoughts also go out to the runners who will be running next Monday and hope that it goes well for them. Okay. Now on to one of the fun things that we at the Board of Selectmen get to do is recognize a citizen who has done some great things for our community. So Martin, I'm going to ask that you come stand up at the podium. And behind it, well, if you think you might want to say something, then you need to stand behind it so that we can hear you. But I'm going to let Steve Mitchell start with our proclamation.
And if it's all right, I'm going to stand with Martin and read this.
Thank you.
I should probably bring my magnifiers.
So, welcome.
Nice being here.
And so we'd like to start with a presentation of Board of Selectmen's proclamation. We also have Senator Spilka in the room with the proclamation from the State Senate, as well as from the House of Representatives, and we have representatives from the temple as well to speak. So, let's start with the Board of Selectmen proclamation. Whereas Martin Shapiro, a longtime resident of Ashland and highly involved member of the community, recently celebrated his 90th birthday, mazel tov.
Thank you.
And whereas Martin Shapiro spent his lifetime in the service of his country, his Commonwealth, his family, and the communities where he lived, and whereas Martin became an active volunteer and passionate advocate for the Ashland community, and whereas Martin served on the Industrial Development Committee, the Economic Development Committee, and the Ashland Business Association, and whereas Martin proposed and developed the Discover Ashland campaign in an effort to attract more business to the town, and whereas Martin worked tirelessly to identify the needs of the Ashland Jewish community and founded the congregation, Shereesh Shalom, and whereas Martin, along with Father John Sheridan of St. Cecilia's Parish, founded the Ashland Interfaith Council, and whereas Martin, for more than 18 years, steadfastly chronicled life in Ashland through his weekly column in the Ashland tab titled "Fiddler on the Keyboard," and now therefore, we, the Selectmen of the Town of Ashland, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 23rd, 2014, as Martin Shapiro Day. We urge all residents to make known their appreciation for his devotion to the Town of Ashland. We wish him good health and good fortune. Signed, Yolanda Greaves, Chair, on behalf of the Ashland Board of Selectmen.
My God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to invite Senator Spilka to the podium. And before we start with Senator Spilka, behind every good man, obviously, is a good woman, and we have some flowers for Judy Shapiro.
All of your arrows.
Thank you.
I'm going to get out of the way.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's because I kissed your wife.
Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
It's my pleasure to be here tonight to honor Martin. I got to know Martin when he moved into Ashland. He literally moved into the house in my backyard. So, we could look out and we'd see the house and got to know Martin and Judy, and over the years, that friendship, I believe, has just grown and blossomed.
Oh, yes.
And respect and honor for you and all that you've done. You know, just in recapping a little bit of your past and your history, before you came here, it was, it's interesting to know, because so much of what you are now, who you are now, of course, is dependent upon your experiences, your life, growing up in the Depression, becoming an engineer, and getting a BS, getting a master's at Framingham State many years later, and I recognize we have a representative of Framingham State here who also has a letter for you, so you will need a truck when you go home to bring back all of this stuff. But so much, you know, you've raised four wonderful children, and then, you know, you found your home here in Ashland, and as Steve mentioned, time and time again, you have continuously stepped up to the plate to get involved in the community. You're no back-bencher, that's something that I can say for certain. You're not a shy or retiring person. You say what you believe in, but you say it respectfully, and you try to really work with people to get things done, and that's indicative of all the committees, all the boards that you've been involved in, in helping to start the Jewish temple here in Ashland, in seeing a need, in seeing a void, and you step in to fill it. You don't hesitate, you step in to do what you can to fill it, to make everybody's lives better. I know that your article in the tab for 18 years was a mainstay, we would all read it, and it was wonderful to read, and so I want to thank you for that and all the times that you wrote about things that were happening in Ashland. But in every area of Ashland life, of the Ashland community, you have left your mark and will continue to leave your mark. So, it's with great pleasure, on, you know, your 90th birthday, which is hard to believe, that I can give you a Senate citation, and I have one from Tom Senekandro as a house, but since I'm here, I'll read the Senate one. And it's, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Martin Shapiro in recognition of your 90th birthday and your many, many outstanding contributions and invaluable service to the Town of Ashland, and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends best wishes for continued success," and it's signed by Therese Murray, Senate President, William Welch, the Clerk of the Senate, Karenie Spilka, the State Senator, and it's dated today. So, congratulations and best of luck."
Thank you.
There you go.
Who's next?
Let's go Peter.
Who's up on deck?
Hi, Peter.
Hi, Eli Martin. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's nice to be here tonight to represent Framingham State University, presenting Martin with a letter. It's very interesting, not only because of the years I read Martin's, you know, weekly column in the tab, which kind of reminded me, it was political, it reminded me of Buffalo Hills columns that he used to have on the Boston Globe a long time ago, but also, we have our close friends in Revere, and we were at their home three or four years ago, when this woman and her husband were there, and it's your daughter, you have two daughters, one of your daughters?
Yes.
Yeah, and she said, you know, "I grew up in Ashland." Oh, yeah, hi. But it's just, you know, a small world, you meet folks, you know?
Right.
But anyway, we did want to, President Martin asked me to congratulate you, not only on the academic success you've had, receiving a master's from Framingham State, and also additional work, but for your commitment to the community. You know, the community service that you've done in the Town of Ashland, we think reflects great credit on the university. In fact, we recently published a brochure that was circulating around the Metro West area, a community service that the university provides to the towns in the surrounding area, you know, by students, faculty, and staff, volunteerism, and I wanted to congratulate you on that, and also wanted to congratulate you on your upcoming wedding anniversary, too.
Thank you.
Yep, we have this letter for you, and thank you.
Thank you, Peter. This is a big surprise.
And now Anthony Skiavi, our town manager.
Oh, good.
How are you?
Fine, gentlemen, how are you?
Nice to see you. So, obviously, I wanted to present one of my town manager coins to you for all you've done, not only serving your community, but serving your country as well, both as a military person and as a civilian. We probably ran across some of the same people over the years.
I'm sure we did.
Probably at Hancum, and I've given out over 100 of these since I started about a year ago, and for all different reasons. And, you know, on the front, we have the Ashland Town Seal, and on the back, our American flag, but the words integrity, service, and excellence, which are the core values that I spent 30 years behind, and you meet every one of those. Integrity in everything that you do and serving the community, the service that you provided, but also the excellent example that you set for so many people. And I just want to thank you on behalf of the town and myself for everything that you've done. And you have to keep this with you all the time, by the way, because if we happen to run into each other, I have mine in my pocket, so you might be buying me breakfast or lunch if you don't have yours on you. Congratulations on your birthday, and I know you'll continue to serve the town well, and it's been a pleasure to have known you and to continue to know you, so.
Thank you.
All right, hold on to that, don't drop.
It's heavy.
Oh, my goodness, more and more. My name is Ari Kaufman from Ashland. On behalf of the membership of Shereesh Shalom, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Martin Shapiro and his wife Judy on the occasion of Martin's 90th birthday. Martin's contributions to the Town of Ashland over the years have been numerous. Soon after moving to Ashland in May 2004, I became a regular and enthusiastic reader of Martin's "Fiddler on the Keyboard" column in the Ashland tab. The weekly column was sadly discontinued last year when the tab ceased publication, but anyone who had the opportunity to read Martin's columns could attest to his enthusiasm for the great people of Ashland, his support for important causes, and his appreciation for the many traditions such as Ashland Day, and the various organizations that made Ashland a great place to live. One of these great organizations, Shereesh Shalom, was started by none other than Martin himself. Back in the summer of 1995, Martin Shapiro placed announcements in the local papers, back when people still read newspapers, to publicize an organizational meeting to be held at the Ashland Federated Church. Over 30 people attended that first meeting. The congregation eventually adopted the Hebrew name of Shereesh Shalom, which means gates of peace. Today, nearly 20 years later, Shereesh Shalom is a flourishing congregation with the dynamic Rabbi Margie Klein and a wonderful president, Jane Greenstein. Though we are not a large congregation, and we don't even have our own building, we have built something more important, a truly supportive Jewish community welcoming to interfaith families, same-sex couples, and even people who live outside of Ashland. Martin Shapiro is all about community. Sure, some people could just treat Ashland as a bedroom community for Boston that has good schools, but Martin has always sought out a higher purpose for Ashland, and we are all so much better for it. Congratulations and happy birthday.
Thank you for the seed you planted.
Thank you, Jane, for carrying on.
Now, before we let you go, is there anything you would like to say?
Wow. There are some things I should say. I didn't know what was happening tonight. I knew it had something to do with my birthday, and that was all. So, forgive me if I'm not prepared, but one, I want to correct something that was said. I am not the founder of Shereesh Shalom. My wife and I are the founders. I couldn't have done it without her. And, you know, the other thing I would like to say is, I got a lot of credit for a lot of things, and I don't think I would have wanted to do it in any other town but Ashland. It's really a wonderful community, and I know each and every one of you here on the Board of Selectmen, as I know hundreds of other people in town, and you're all wonderful. And you're all my friends. I don't, you know, none of this we and they business, it's really a friendly town, and I respect almost everyone I've met here. Certainly, everyone working for the town. Really. Joe is one of the most respectful people I've ever met. You know, to this day, he refuses to call me by my first name.
That's right.
It's always Mr. Shapiro.
Mr. Shapiro, and it will always be that one.
And, you know, I accept it. I, you know, I don't want, I want everyone to call me by my first name, but those who insist upon calling me by a more formal name, okay, I'm not going to refuse it, but I, you know, I'm going to be, I'm going to be Martin until the day I go in the ground, and maybe even after that. So, I don't know what to say other than thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Well, I just want to-
Somewhat broken up.
I just want to say thank you, because you have done so much for this community, as we stated in the proclamation, but I think we are the ones who benefit from all that you have done for us and for Ashland, so thank you.
And I'm not kidding. How do you say it, Annie Stewart, just a bit?
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to get that truck and back it up so we can take all this thing?
I know.
Nicely done, man.
Good. We have a few minutes before our next appointment, so I'd like to open it up to citizens' participation, if there is any.
I'll wait till the room clears. I'm always good that way.
Well, I think they can move quietly if you'd like to do.
I'm all set. Mark Soney, 49 Hawthorne Road. I'm striving to be like you, Mr. Martin Shapiro, but I think my dad beat you to it. The respect goes both ways. I'm here to understand that the marathon's coming. I'm here, we're going to have a lot of police presence and security. I'm here to say, I saw in the Ashland Police Site, a picture, Officer Albertini, Pierce, and Borden in Boston yesterday. I want to congratulate all the blue first responders. It's worth the picture, it's worth a thousand words. Along the route, people as guys as say, let's have a great day. Be pride, have pride, be true. Call power the marathon is the Ashland blue. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Mark. So, at this time, before we go into our next thing, if anyone would like to leave, we will not be offended. If you are here for Martin's ceremony, we would not be offended if you decide to leave at this point. So, thank you for coming, thank you for helping us celebrate Martin and Judy for all that they've done, so. Do they need a hand? Want to go see if they need a-
Would you like a bigger check?
We're just going to take a few minutes to allow Martin and Judy to head out. You're very welcome. That's okay. You can go home and turn this on on TV. Okay, let's take a five-minute recess. Put that up, and then we'll start. We'll be back in about five minutes. Welcome back. We just took a short break, and the room did clear, but we are moving on to our agenda. Our next item on the agenda is a liquor hearing for Fusion Restaurant. This is a public hearing. I'm opening the hearing with this reading of the notice. "On March 13th, 2014, notice of this hearing was sent pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter 13864 to determine whether Fusion Restaurant Inc., DBA A Fusion Restaurant Fusion, the holder of a license issued pursuant to General Law Chapter 13812, to conduct business at the premises located at 12 Pond Street, Ashland 01721, has violated the provisions of said Chapter 138 or any rules and regulations promulgated under the authority of that chapter, and if such violation is found to have occurred, whether such licenses should be modified, suspended, or revoked in accordance with General Law Chapter 13823. The subjects to be discussed at the hearing include the following alleged violations of applicable law, rules, and/or regulations. One, whether on or about February 1st, 2014, Fusion sold alcoholic beverages to an intoxicated person in violation of General Law Chapter 138 Sub 69. Two, whether on or about February 2nd, 2014, Fusion again sold alcoholic beverages to an intoxicated person in violation of General Law Chapter 138 Sub 69, and whether it permitted unlawful activity on its premises in violation of 205 CMR 2.05. Additionally, on March 19th, 2014, Fusion was sent another notice that the following alleged violations occurred and would be heard at this hearing pursuant to General Law Chapter 138 Sub 64, namely, one, whether on or about March 14th, 2014, Fusion sold alcoholic beverages to an intoxicated person in violation of General Law Chapter 138 Sub 69, and two, whether on or about March 15th, 2014, Fusion again sold alcoholic beverages to an intoxicated person in violation of General Law 138 Sub 69, and whether it permitted unlawful activity on its premises in violation of 205 CMR 2.05." Officially opening the hearing. Prior to offering any evidence, I ask that if there is anyone here who will be presenting evidence to the Board, please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. If you are here and going to be given evidence, okay? Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Okay. Swear that the testimony I'm about to provide is the whole truth. Okay, good. Okay, the hearing is now open. For the purpose of moving forward, I will request that Town Council present the matters before us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the Chair read in the opening, there are a number of counts that were alleged to have occurred, and with the cooperation of the manager and the owner, they have stipulated to a number of those counts. And so, the Board will not have to make a finding about whether or not they actually occurred, since the license holder has admitted that, in fact, they have. And I'm going to go through that stipulation, and includes all but one of the counts. I, Kindepchen, of 197 Linwood Avenue, Newton, Mass. 02548, and the manager of a Fusion Restaurant, which we call the establishment, located at 12 Pond Street, Ashland, Massachusetts. I'm duly authorized to sign this stipulation on behalf of the establishment, and as noted earlier, the owner is in the present in the audience tonight. On February 1st, 2014, the employees of the establishment served alcoholic beverages to an intoxicated person, namely, a non-Hispanic white male who was later taken into custody by the Ashland Police Department for alleged speeding violations, negligent operation of a motor vehicle, operating under the influence of liquor, and an expired inspection sticker. That's count one, exhibit one. On February 1st, 2014, employees of the establishment served alcoholic beverages to an intoxicated, excuse me, intoxicated person, namely, a non-Hispanic white female who was a participant in a fight at the establishment, where two employees of the establishment, one of which was the manager on duty, were hit by a thrown glass. That's counts two and three, exhibit two. On March 15th, the employees of the establishment served alcoholic beverages to an intoxicated person, namely, a female who required assistance when leaving the establishment. Said assistance was provided by the floor manager and admitted to the police she had been drinking all night. Count five, exhibit five. And Finn, would you like to add something to that?
Yes.
Get up and speak.
I was on staff that night when the little incident happened. I realized, oh, her girlfriend was escorting a girl to the bathroom. I asked her, you know, she's drinking too much, and then they, all her girlfriends said it's okay, because it was her birthday, I played, it's not okay. I had to escort her out, or all you guys have to leave. Then they said, she's not driving, but they'll get someone to drive her. I was the one that- I was the one that brought her all the way outside to make sure that she got into a car with someone else.
Thank you. Okay. On March...number six, on March 15th, 2014, an individual who was intoxicated left the establishment and was unable to locate his automobile even though it was parked in the rear parking lot. The individual had been in the establishment between one and two hours. I have no proof that this individual has not served alcoholic beverages in the establishment, but I do recall him coming into the establishment as he was dressed in a green hat and shamrock skirt...excuse me, shirt, according to the manager. That's count six, exhibit five. So, they have stipulated to all of those incidents. Then, Madam Chair and members of the Board, there's one matter, what I'll refer to as count four, which has not been stipulated to, and if it pleases the Board, I'd like to present that information at this time.
Okay? Please do.
If I could call up Officer Robert Arugio, please? So, this alleged incident occurred on or about March 14th, 2014, at 4:53 a.m. And Officer Arugio, could you please state your name for the record?
Robert Arugio.
And Officer Arugio, what is your employment?
Uh, Town of Ashland, as a patrolman.
And how long have you been a patrolman?
Approximately twelve...uh, twelve and a half years.
Okay. In the course of your employment, were you working on March 14th, 2014?
Yes, I was.
And what was your shift?
The 2300 to 0700 shift.
And can you tell me during that shift, did you receive notice of an alleged stolen vehicle?
Yes, I did.
If so, can you describe for me the circumstances surrounding that and what occurred?
The, uh, bulletin was put out by a dispatcher saying there was vehicles stolen from Washakeam Street in Framiem. Put the description out with the plate of the vehicle. As soon as I was traveling towards the center of town on Oak Street, I observed the vehicle coming towards me, fitting that description, the plate, and the vehicle description. I ended up turning my vehicle around, ended up making a motor vehicle stop up by Oak in Oregon.
And then what happened?
I ended up ordering the driver out of the vehicle on the P.A. system, and she was placed under arrest. And she was...um, when I was intervening with her, I could detect a moderate odor of alcohol.
Okay. And did you submit a report concerning this incident?
Yes.
And if I could, Madam Chair?
This is exhibit three.
Is this your report, exhibit three, Officer Arugio?
Yes, it is.
And what does it say on the top of the document?
The...on Friday, March 14th, or...
Yes, the whole...that whole title.
On March 14th, 2014, I was assigned to the 2300-0700 patrol shift in a mock unit A-9 in the north sector of town.
Okay, so can you review this a little bit self...to yourself to make sure this is your complete report?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And during your stop, was a blood alcohol test administered to the suspect?
Yes, it was.
And did you report the results of that test in your report?
Yes, I did.
And what was that result?
The, uh, result was .148 at approximately 055...0555 hours.
Okay. And what is the legal blood alcohol level, Officer?
.08.
And in your experience, the blood alcohol level of suspect, was that in excess of the legal blood alcohol limit?
Yes.
Okay. And did the suspect provide any statement to you as to what occurred that led her to driving the alleged stolen vehicle?
Uh, yes, she...she admitted being at the Fusion Restaurant that night, and then went to the sister's house after the Fusion Restaurant closed up.
And in addition to...did she tell you that, Officer?
Yes.
And in addition to that, did she actually issue a written statement as well?
Yes, she did.
And can you tell me if exhibit four is actually the written statement as well?
Yes, it is.
And in your experience...uh, excuse me, I did not give you one. Can I borrow that a minute? Thanks. And can you read the narrative that was provided by the suspect?
Uh, yes, I can. The narrative starts off, "I was at my sister's house at 63 Washakeam Street in Framiem after having dinner at Fusion. We decided to go there after having some drinks. I realized it was around 3:00 a.m. and decided to go home because I had to be in Auburn at 8:00 a.m. My car was the last in the driveway, and my sister told me to take the first car available. I went outside and ate the coma, had keys in it, so I got inside and started driving home. I got pulled over in Ashland, I believe it was misunderstanding. I wanted to apologize to the owners of the vehicles. I told I was of my sister's friends."
Thank...thank you. I have nothing else at this time.
Okay. At this point, would anyone from Fusion care to add or present anything different? Please come forward, state your name. You can just step...thank you.
My name is Vinth. I'm the manager there, but...because she stated that she was leaving...she did came and have dinner at Fusion. I think she went back to her sister's. We were closed at 1:00. No one's on the premise after 1:00 unless they're in their car leaving, but she got...she got pulled over 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. During that period of time, she could sober up or unless she was drinking elsewhere. And then she got pulled over early in the morning, and then still...still smelled like alcohol. It's...I can't say that we're responsible for a customer if they leave after five hours. They could be doing something else, and then they're driving, and then under the influence of alcohol.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on this?
I have a couple of follow-up questions for...
Okay, go ahead.
...the Officer.
Okay, great.
Officer Arugio, did you ask the suspect when she left Fusion?
Uh, yes, I did.
And did she tell you when that was?
At close, 1:00.
Okay. And did you ask the suspect if she had consumed any alcohol from when she left Fusion until you stopped her?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing else on that matter.
Okay. So, the next thing we need to do is we need to discuss each count and vote to determine if a violation has occurred. You can...yeah, we're all set. Thank you. But given that the license holder has agreed that violations occurred in counts one, two, three, and five, and six, we don't need to make a further determination on that matter, but as to count four, we do need to determine if a violation has occurred. And that question is, did Fusion sell alcoholic beverages to an intoxicated person on March 13th, 14th, in violation of General Law, Chapter 138, 69? So, we need to discuss that violation first and determine if we feel that a violation actually did occur. Any further questions or comments?
So, I'm not sure if we can ask more questions. I mean, in my opinion, given the information that's presented to us, I don't see how we'd be able to determine that she was over-served in this establishment because there weren't enough questions asked, i.e., how many...how many beverages did she consume in that establishment? And then also, you know, did she drink afterwards? So, I don't see how we as a Board...I know I can as an individual determine that she over...was over-served at Fusion based upon the information that's presented, so...and being that those questions weren't asked, I don't...I personally can't come to that conclusion, so...
Okay. Any other comments on that...on that count?
I would...I would agree. It's...the gap in time certainly is significant to indicate, you know, just that, uh, we can't necessarily assign fault to Fusion on this particular...this particular count.
Okay. Mark?
I would agree with Paul and Steve. I mean, the math says that she would have had to be still drinking after, though, even if she left it closed, last call's probably about 35 hours later, she's got that elevated blood alcohol level. She would have had to have been continued drinking, so it's going to be difficult for us to decide whether she was over-served there or was served and went home after dinner and then just kept drinking.
Okay.
I have to agree. I mean, we have to have proof of fact, and we don't have proof of fact.
Okay.
But I think we have...
So, based on that, are we looking to dismiss that count?
You can...yes, you can say that...you can vote that you don't believe a violation occurred.
Okay. This...okay. If I can get a motion?
Sure. Move to vote that a violation did not occur in count number four.
Okay. Good. So, with that decision made, now we...
Second.
Oh, sorry, second. Sorry. And all in...all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for catching that. Trying to move along. Anyway. Okay, so given that there are stipulated violations, so we as a Board must decide what penalty should be assessed for each violation. Under General Law, Chapter 138, Sub 64, it provides the licensing authorities, after notice to the licensee, and reasonable opportunity for him to be heard from...by them, may modify, suspend, revoke, or cancel his license upon satisfactory proof that he has violated or permitted a violation, any condition thereof, or any law of the Commonwealth. So, some of the things we might want to consider is the number of violations, the extent of the violations, a result of non-compliance with the state...with the statute and regulations. And I do have a motion ready, once we can determine what we see. Yes, Paul?
So, I have a couple of questions. I don't know if procedures will be correct. Based upon the fact that the first incident happened on February 1st, what action was taken by the town to notify the restaurant Fusion and its owner in relationship to that violation? Can anyone share that information?
The notice was sent out on March 13th with the list of violations.
So, that was the first time that the town had communicated with...
The list of the first...March 1st and the first set of violations.
Two, then a...
First and second, right.
Right, so the February 1st and 2nd ones, they were notified on March 13th.
I...I don't know the answer to that, whether or not the police department had a conversation with Fusion or not. I don't know the answer to that.
So, March 13th was the first time that they were notified in relation to the over-serving situation on the date of February 1st?
Correct.
Okay. And then, as I see this here, you received that on the 13th, and then on the 15th, twice again, that two days later, there were repeat violations. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And you...you acknowledged receipt of that first document? Okay.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions?
Any other questions?
So, I...you know, I look at this, and I'll share my personal opinion here. To me, the safety of the community is...is the most important element here. If someone's being over-served, and then they get out there on the roads and they harm someone else, that's the thing that concerns me the most as a selectman. How you run your business and all that, that's a different element for me, although we're responsible to make sure that you do it right. I see five violations here. And I guess the thing that maybe troubles me is you received notification on the 13th. I think, as a business owner, on the 14th, depending on what time you received that on the 13th, there would have been a staff meeting and notification of, "We cannot allow this to happen again," yet two days later, it happened twice again. That concerns me that maybe you didn't take this as seriously as it maybe you should have. So, you know, there clearly there are five separate violations here. And I know, having sat here for a while and seen some less egregious violations, i.e. serving underage, we have penalized other establishments for underage serving. You know, to me, it's at minimum, you know, five separate violations individually, and I know in the past, for the underage drinking, we have suspended the license for periods of time. You know, I thought a lot about this today, and I think the thing that I could come to is at minimum, five suspensions. And I think, you know, I would view a suspension as a Thursday to a Sunday, so four consecutive days. I understand that's hard for your establishment. I understand financially that's going to impact you tremendously, but I would also hope, as an individual, that it would say to you how serious we take it as a Board, or I know, me at least, okay? So, I would view it as five separate violations. My suggestion personally would be to, you know, Thursday to Sunday, you're allowed to serve Monday to Wednesday, because I don't want to put you out of business, because I think having businesses in the community is important. I think these nights are probably the most challenging for you. So, I would suggest that there was served a Thursday to a Sunday, and then you get the three days back, and then the next Thursday to a Sunday, and then allow you to go a week and a half, and then have the third suspension served, again, a Thursday to Sunday, and put the last two in abeyance for probationary period. So, in the event that you handle things properly, those last two could be set aside. But this is just my personal opinion, so...
Yeah, we're all going to get to speak.
So, that's...that's how I would view it. I try to think about the fairest way. You know, we could say, "This is five consecutive," and shut you down for five weeks. I think that could put you out of business or hurt you tremendously. This is very serious, in my opinion, and I think by doing that, I'm sure Thursday to Sunday is going to be very difficult for you, but I hope it would establish in your mind that this is very serious, and the other two in abeyance, and maybe even more serious could, you know, would be a greater impact to you. So, that's kind of my thought process as I worked through it today, so...
Steve?
Well, I think we all share the concern about safety. I mean, I don't believe any of us want to have on our shoulders somebody leaving your establishment, getting into an accident, hurting a police officer, hurting themselves, or hurting somebody else. So, my concern is, and I share a lot of what Paul just said, certainly, my concern is, and thinking about it a lot over the last couple of days, is your ability to control your clientele. And it seems to me that...that that's an issue here. I'm not suggesting an unwillingness to control it, but it seems...there might be an inability, and I...so, that's concerning to me. And I believe it would be concerning to...to the police department as well. And I think we need to look at some options as to, you know, how, if you truly can't control your clientele, how do we provide potentially for that or assist you in that area? Again, no one wants to put you out of business. At the same time, these are serious violations. I'm of the, I guess, opinion that we need to apply a significant penalty here. At the same time, sensitive to you as a business owner, and as well as how do we possibly work to get a situation in place where you're in control of your business? Because it seems to me, on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, you may not be, based on what I've read here and what you've agreed to. So, in my mind, each count is deserving of five days, six days. I guess advocating that maybe we provide a...an opportunity for you to assess your situation, maybe come back, maybe consider...and I know that the Chief of Police, Chief Davis, is...is an advocate for a detail. It's a cost, but it's something I think that we need to encourage you to look at seriously. And, you know, I think that, you know, we can penalize people all day long. That doesn't necessarily stop their behavior. It happens over and over again. So, how do we best, I guess, create a situation where we could work together, incentivize you in a sense, to move in that direction? So, I guess I'm of the...the opinion that we apply a penalty... So, uh, I guess I'm of the, the, the opinion that we apply a penalty, in my opinion, it, it would be, uh, if we've got five counts, it's six days per count, it's thirty days, but we provide a situation where we can, uh, instead of, let's say, immediately putting the, the restaurant on notice, we may give him a window of opportunity to come back and say, here's what I'm willing to do, here's what I will do, and, uh, if that meets with our satisfaction, we can then, uh, adjust accordingly, so.
Okay. Mark?
Madam Chair, if I may, uh, and I understand Paul and Steve's points, and, and I agree with some of both. I, I guess, I fall more to the side that, while the manager's on duty, and perhaps you could have an officer on duty during the more frequented times at the bar, it, by law, is the responsibility of the servers to manage what the, the clients drink. And, uh, clearly, there's an issue there, there may be an issue with the management's ability to oversee the servers' activities, et cetera. I've read the background on the, the prior penalties that have been held, that have been dispensed in the state for similar issues like this, and, and, and with respect, I think both of you have fallen on the heavy side of those prior penalties. My proposal would be this, I believe all the servers should be, go back to tip training and be recertified with, uh, a, a serious discussion from the management on what that means, and how they ought to treat the clients who have more than the allowable amount of drinks in an evening, and that's typically one per hour, and that's, that's what the training says. I believe that two days per event is legitimate, I think they should be held serially, so the restaurant should probably take a week off, that manages a heavier period of time and a less heavier period of time, so maybe financially, it's not as damaging, plus, my concern is that the patrons in town, if there's three or four weekends in a row that the restaurant is closed, that's an issue for the patrons in town. I would say that, if in fact, we were to do this, that any further violations be written in whatever our agreement is, month closure, period, no discussion, you know, what we, through the hearing, but the minimum fine next time would be thirty days closure. And if that doesn't send a message for the restaurant to get people recertified, manage those people after the recertification, there's nothing else we can do.
So just to be clear, you're looking not to just suspend their serving of liquor, you're looking to actually close the restaurant?
Well, well.
That we can't do.
No, I'm not saying.
Oh, okay. Suspend the sale and serving of liquor, of alcohol. Okay, so the restaurant can still, okay, just to be clear, because it sounded like you were.
My apologies.
No, I, that's why I asked, okay. So, and you're saying?
Spending for seven days, the liquor sales.
Well, you said two days per event, so that would be a total of ten days.
Okay.
But, okay.
So, if it's Monday to Wednesday.
Okay.
I would like to see them only have to lose the one weekend, with the caveat that if they have another violation, it's a month violation.
Okay.
But I think more importantly, the recertification is most important, and that the management knows that once everyone's recertified, they have to keep a pulse on the servers, if they wanna go as far as getting some support from the local Ashland Police to sort of oversee the clientele for some time, until they think that everything's copasthetic, I think that's a good idea also.
Okay. Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a lot of things that I would like to say, and I know I have to be very careful how I say this because of history. Um, I do agree with Paul and Steve, um, that we need to make sure that this board's notice, not only just to Fusion, but to all the restaurants in town, that we're not gonna take exception to anybody violating the rules of, of, of the, getting their liquor license. I couldn't agree with, with you any, any more, Mark, with respect to get tip recertified. I think that is, that, that is an absolute, a total absolute, and not just for the bartenders, I think the manager as well, just to refresh their memory, um, what needs to be done, that's a responsibility for you. Uh, wearing that uniform once, I have to tell you, when, when you're dealing with individuals that are intoxicated, you can get hurt, and unfortunately, that falls on your shoulders, sir. Your shoulders. And when those, those gentlemen in blue go over there to assist and help and aid, they don't need to get injured. And when, when you have somebody that's totally out of control, kicking and screaming and punching or whatever, you know that what, someone is gonna get hurt. I believe it was you, if I'm not mistaken, that you got hit in the back of the head with a glass. I mean, how much more can you, can you take? How much more can this board take? And, and I think that the punishment, uh, though severe, may be, may be, uh, may be online. I would like to offer, uh, a, a, a different approach in, into, into the punishment factor, and, and I, and I discussed it with, with counsel, and I was wondering if we have the ability to restrict their hours of operation?
Yes, you do.
'Cause if we have the ability to restrict their hours of operation, instead of shutting you down, we, we reduce the hours that you can stay open, which limits the amount of people that get the ability to drink, along with an office presence, so, uh, I believe you're open till one o'clock?
Serve.
Just serve only.
Just serve.
So, I'm, I'm thinking that if, if that's the case, then, we, we push that back two hours, to eleven. So your serving, your serving instruct, your serving license holds up until eleven o'clock, until we can be assured that this restaurant understands and accepts and will continue to work under the guidelines of chapter one thirty-eight, which is the licensing authority. So, I, and that way, at least you stay open, and you can, you can still have, run a business, and it doesn't affect you financially, I'm sure it will at some, at some point, it will, it will, but at the same token, uh, at least it gives you an opportunity to, to keep your doors open, um, but the serving has to stop at eleven. I mean, that would be my recommendation.
Well, if it's two hours, isn't last call twelve-thirty?
But, he closes, he closes at one, so.
Okay.
I would, I would retrofit it to eleven.
So you just pull the, pull the last, last call to eleven, and so, an hour and a half earlier than what it was before. Okay. So, we have a couple of different options here, and I think we as a board need to...
About your thoughts?
Um.
Thank you.
You don't get out on that.
No. Um, no, I think this is a serious violation, and is our, our role as the licensing board, it's, it's our job to make sure that we get the message to Fusion, as well as to other establishments, that we take this very seriously, and the, the safety of the public is the important thing. I mean, we wanna support you as a business, because it's important to keep businesses going and strong in town, but not at the expense of the safety of the pop, of the population. Um, I sort of come in, in, sort of in the middle of all the recommendations. Um, I think we do need to take this seriously, I think we need to, um, give a start, a stiff penalty. I think, to, you know, to Paul's point, where we could do a couple of weekends and then keep some in suspension. Um, I also would think maybe a discussion with the chief, um, to see how this can be handled, and some of the other issues that have been brought up could be handled, might be good. Um, I, 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 I think a mix of all these different things together would work. So I think if we wanna pick the number of days per count, um, anywhere, I've heard four, six, and two. Um, you know, a, a, you know, is it a weekend, is it a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so that's four days for each count? Um, and then, to Mark's point, include the tip training and the recertification there, uh, include, um, uh, what Paul said about, you know, put it in for three weeks, see how that works, so.
May I ask a legal question, point of order? Counsel, if, um, we do this, say, in three weeks, and it's not working to our liking?
Satisfaction.
Satisfaction. Is there something, can we amend that, or is it something that, it has to be finalized now?
Well, you need to finalize it when you send him the notice of whatever the result is, um, and if there's further violations, then these gonna be before the board, so, you, you could do that, um, you could do a provisional modification, so I'm gonna follow up on your point, um, where you could say, you gotta close at ten, and then, and you could perhaps impose some other penalties and say, but we're gonna hold those in abeyance, while we see over the next three, six months, whatever, that if you're closing at ten and you're doing what you need to do, we can come back in and, um, you can ask for a modification. You can't leave it open-ended, but you can say, you can come in back, and, so you need to define, you can modify totally and say, it's gonna be closed at ten, and you're gonna do a penalty. And then, if he's doing a really good job, and he wants to modify that, he can always come back to the board and say, uh, you know, I request a modification to the license that you modified, and say that, you know, I've been doing a great job, I served my six, ten, twelve days, or whatever, I've been closed at ten, I haven't had any violations, would you consider relieving me back to the regular hours?
Okay.
So he can always come in and ask for a modification, and you can issue a penalty, have some served, and have some held in abeyance, if you wish, pending, no further violations, or something of that nature.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam Chair, just one other quick comment.
Yep.
Um, these violations, the violations that we're aware of, I'm, I'm concerned of the violations that haven't been caught, and how many have gone by the boards that, um, you know, if, if this is what we're seeing as a, a standard be, uh, practice of behavior eh, from, from, from the restaurant, and, and the bar, um, how many more are we unaware of? And he, again, it comes, it falls back on your shoulders, sir, you have to take on this responsibility. I mean, I'm sure that this is going on, your bart, your bartenders need to be aware of this, and if they're not, this is not just four, six incidences that are taking place, I'm, it's, that, that, that we're aware of, I'm sure there's many, many more that we weren't aware of, nor maybe you weren't aware of. So, again, you have an internal issue that has to be addressed, and I don't think that's something that we ourselves need to direct to you to do, you, that's something that you have to do as a manager, and maybe you have to look in the mirror and say to yourself, maybe I can't do that. But if you wanna continue opening that place, you're gonna have to do it.
Okay. Steve?
Um, yeah, just to underscore that, and, uh, I guess to go to my point earlier, I think it's, you know, again, I, I have this sense, reading all this information, a concern about your ability to, to control that, control your clientele. I think you can get your employees to get, become recertified, I think you can go through all that, you can serve a penalty, but, you know, how are we gonna be confident that, at the end of the day, you're totally bought into the, the idea of changing your, your environment, and ensuring that your clientele behave appropriately? So, I, I guess, I, you know, we need to provide some sort of, uh, incentive buy-in for, for the owner to, uh, to work, work a solution here, work with us.
Okay.
So I have a, a question and a comment.
Okay.
I don't believe we need to settle this this evening, is that an accurate statement?
That's true.
Okay. Based upon that, we've shared a lot of thoughts here, all of them different, um, and I think what might be helpful for us, if we choose not to settle this this evening, obviously, you know, being in front of us right now, certainly is, I would hope, would raise his level of awareness, and things would start to get better. Um, but he has heard a lot of things from all of us, each one of us have different concerns. Um, it might be advantageous for him, and us as well, if he had the ability to maybe meet with the chief of police, hear some thoughts, you've heard some things from different board members, you can meet with management, you can re-meet with counsel, and maybe you yourself could share with us, at a future meeting, what you feel is the appropriate action, not so much in relationship to suspension, but the things that you think are important to correct your situation, 'cause I think all of us have shared with you that there's a problem with your situation, and, and somewhat how you're running your business right now. So I think it might help us to, to maybe feel more comfortable with whatever we decide to do, what you're gonna come back to us, uh, with, and, and you have all these resources available to you, and maybe you wanna meet with you, I don't know if this makes sense to the board, but you could meet with all those people, you've heard a lot of comments, you might hear more, I mean, I'm sure the chief of police has some suggestions, he worked in framing him for a long time, there's a lot of experience over there, and, um, so I don't know if that makes sense to the board, and if you, would be amenable to that as well, so.
Okay. Steve?
If I may, yeah, and, and I, uh, uh, agree with, with Paul, I think that does make a lot of sense, certainly to interact with, with Chief Davis, interact again with, with town council. My own opinion is, uh, I believe we should apply a penalty tonight. Uh, I believe that we should have that, but hold that into abeyance until a, a date, which would be, I think our next meeting would be appropriate, give you an opportunity to come back, we can then hear your plan, as to how you're gonna make your business model work better, and then I think it'd be better, as Paul stated, better, we'd be better able to then apply those penalties appropriately. 'Cause I do, I think we all believe that you need to, yeah, there needs to be a penalty here, no question, so.
Okay.
I guess I have a question, a comment, a question to Steve. If we were to set a penalty, whatever it is, tonight, and then hold it in abeyance till Vin comes back and says, this is what I'm gonna do, are you indicating that we could change the penalty if we like his plan?
Well, I think what we can do is apply the penalty, um, differently, so, I mean, if we, let's, let's assume we, we, we vote to, uh, uh, apply five days per count, so he's got twenty-five days of, of, of a suspended license. Uh, we hold the whole thing in abeyance until he comes back with a, a potential plan, and if it meets to our approval, we can then decide accordingly. I mean, we may decide to, to do, you know, two consecutive weekends, I don't, you know, we have some flexibility, and, correct me if, if...
So, the board could say, okay, we think this is very serious, I'm gonna use Steve's example, that we think this is very serious, and we would, you've heard everything we've said, and, you know, we're looking at, if you don't do any of these other tweaks, we're looking at thirty-five days. So you heard us, you go work with the chief, and town manager, whatever, and come back, knowing that that's how serious we take this, and tell us how you're gonna address the operations issue. And then the board can decide how to apply those thirty-five days, or not, can change their mind, 'cause you're not closing the hearing, you're telling him to come back with a proposal. So I think you're sending, I think what Steve is suggesting is you're saying, here's what we're looking at, but we're willing, we're, our bigger concern, as all of the board members have said, is that we're very concerned about the operations and getting this stopped. And so, here's what you're looking at, come back and tell us how you're gonna rectify the situation, and then we'll deal with how we apply thirty-five days going forward.
Okay, so it, I, I think that, I like the idea of the mix, so that I think we should definitely apply a certain number of days for each count, because I think that's seri- enough, serious enough, and it also then sort of sets precedent, if someone else in town has a similar issue, we at least have a precedence as to what the penalty is for doing this. And it can be two days, three days, four days, or five days per count. But then go to the point with Lisa and, and Paul, that we can put that in abeyance, we don't have to do that yet, and make a dis, and make a determination that they have to have that discussion, as was just said. So, would anyone like anything else to say, or make a motion, make a, uh, suggestion for the number of days per count?
I have a process question.
Okay.
Would we not have to close the hearing before we took a vote on the penalty?
No, because what, you, you're gonna take a vote on what your, you believe the penalty should be, when you issue the notice.
Right.
The penalty doesn't take place until the hearing is closed and the notice is sent.
Okay. So we can deliberate and give, okay.
So we can...
I know in the past, any public hearing, you doesn't, you take a vote to the hearings closed, that's why I was asking the question, the way I was asking.
Well, but you, but you've asked for more, you've asked for input, and so you have to keep the hearing open, so there's nothing wrong with saying, we're gonna take more input, and this is a baseline that we're looking at, we could change it, but this is what we're looking at right now.
Okay.
Right.
So, I, I'll just give one more comment, and then.
Okay.
Do whatever, so, I am more a person that looks for people to show me where they are, that's who I am. So, I will share information with people, as I believe we have tonight, and then I am more someone who tries to make a decision based upon how that person reacts to the information. I don't like to make threats of people, and then, and have them react to a potential situation. I think he heard, that's what, like, that's why I said what I said, the way I said it. I, I think it's very clear, from every one of us, we all have similar concerns, for me personally, I would like to see someone come back and share with the board, without any, oh, I'm doing this 'cause I don't wanna lose thirty days, or whatever. I like to see people react, 'cause it tells me who
see people react because it tells me who they are and it's also going to tell me, is this a good fit to continue to have a license in this establishment? I know that we only have this in front of us and I don't like to speak to history.
Yeah.
But, and we can't, but you know, that, I believe you've been a manager for how many years there?
Since day one.
Okay. So um.
Long time.
I can't speak to the past.
Mm-hmm.
But I can't stress enough, and that's just my opinion. So you guys can do what you want, but that's kind of where I am and.
Okay.
I can't talk to the past, but.
Yep.
I, you know, this five very serious. And the thing that, the reason I asked some of the questions earlier was, the thing that bothered me the most is on the thirteenth, there was notification and less than two days later, there were two more violations immediately. That concerns me. I don't, I know if I was running a business and the bread and butter of my business is alcohol. I mean, I think that's the reality for most anyone running a restaurant. And I got a notification of a problem. For me personally, I'd be doing everything as soon as I can, as fast as I could to correct that. So that was the element here that spoke louder to me than anything, that the notification come in and two days later. Unfortunately, the message wasn't, you know, got to a step. I agree with the tips. I do agree with all these elements. So that's just kind of my last comment.
So let me just restate what I think you're saying. You do not want to pick, you do not want to select a number of days of violation for each of these counts until we hear back.
I personally have a different process.
Okay.
On how I function in my business and in my life. So that's all I'm sharing.
Mark, your thoughts on that?
Well, I'd like to get to my comment after my question. There's two issues here. One, we'd like to see a corrective action plan from the restaurant and how they're going to not allow this and make sure that this can't happen again. So I'm happy to, if we say go back and come back, that's great.
Okay.
And not only is that great, that's the expectation. There's no other way. That has to happen. And this is my point, regardless of the penalty. We have a sort of a process issue, establishment issue, because we haven't often been in this place before. So if you go to training, it doesn't matter if you're serving someone underage, you're serving someone who's intoxicated. The rule's the same. No. So my position is that we should decide that for that.
Violation.
Violation, this is what we expect as a board for the penalty. All right? And there is no history. This is the history in front of us. So this is the first time.
Right.
So for the first time violation, my view is we should penalize tonight. Ben should take the penalty, come back with the corrective action plan that he works out with the chief. And then we say, we accept that corrective action plan if we do. And if something happens after the corrective action plan, here's what you can expect for further penalty. That's my view.
And what would your suggested penalty be per count? You had originally said two days per count.
Well, looking at the history, the first time, not Fusion history, but A, B, C, C, other activities, the first time counts and it's closer to the two-day.
Mm-hmm.
Violation than the five-day. We can all say what we think in our minds have been going on, but that really doesn't matter. We don't have the right to assume. We only have the right to look at the evidence.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I would be leaning towards as a first-time issue. It's very serious. Here's what we think. We want a corrective action plan. If you fail in the corrective action plan, then go to the maximum penalty.
To Paul's comment though, that they had the two violations, we sent them a notice and then there were two more violations after.
That's why I think we should penalize tonight and apply.
Okay. My question is, based on Paul's comments, do you think all the counts should have the same penalty? Or should there be a difference in penalty because the first ones were the first ones, but the second ones then came after the notification? Just throwing it out there for discussion.
No, I think that's an excellent question and it may lead to some discussion that for the first two counts, it's two and two. And for the second, for the third, fourth and fifth count, maybe it's two, three and four. I mean, I can understand that rationale that they were notified, they should have taken action immediately with the servers and said, this is unacceptable and they didn't. So you could be looking at this document as being offense one and offense two.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Steve or Joe?
Well, my, I think I mentioned six days. There's been five days mentioned. You know, I guess for me, listening to all of us, it's, the issues obviously are Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Those seem to be the problem days. They're probably the largest dollar days for your business as well. So would have the most impact is to have your liquor license suspended for those three days. So I guess in my mind, to have a three-day suspension for each count to be served on a Friday, Saturday and Sunday as determined, to be determined, would work for me. So those are fifteen days.
Okay.
That, and again, I would, I would vote to apply the penalty or to vote the penalty. I would also support holding it into abeyance until the manager spoke to or determined the course of action.
Okay. So, because what, so what we can do is we can apply the number of days per count, but hold it in abeyance until they come back to us at our next meeting and keep the hearing open until the next meeting and then finish it up and make our determination at that point.
Exactly.
Is that good for people?
I guess my only thought with that is we end up making a decision for each event. All right? And there is no, there's no exception in the training to me. I mean.
Right.
So, you know, if we're going to say three, pick the number. I don't think the number is important right now, but if we're going to say three per violation and that means fifteen, but then we're going to manage the application of that violation based on the acceptability of the corrective action plan, that means every time we have an establishment come in front of us, we're going to have to make that decision.
No, not necessarily, Mark.
Well, you're setting the precedent, I think.
Well, not, no, I don't believe we are. I think we're dealing with a situation here and this is certainly my first experience with this on the board. I don't know, you know, in the past is the past. I don't know what's occurred, but I think, you know, we're, and I think Yolanda went to the point, we're not trying to squash businesses. We're trying to be good partners with business and, you know, we expect businesses to be partners with us as well. And I think that we're giving them an opportunity. It doesn't mean that we have to apply this the same way to every situation. And I think, you know, it's an attempt to be reasonable, but it's also an attempt for the owner to rise to the occasion here, to rise to be, to manage his business properly. And I think that's what we're trying to get to ultimately. You know, we can penalize them today and, you know, it's no different than, we see it all the time, people that get penalized, they get licenses suspended and they do it over and over and over again. And that's the concern here. We need to change the behavior.
Okay. Joe, any last, yep?
Yeah, there's a few. And I don't disagree with anything that's been said by the other board members. Um, I wasn't on the board when Fusion came in front and requested a liquor license, but I'm sure that board specified what that license meant and what you needed to do. And I'm sure they didn't make a joke out of it. They were serious then. Well, guess what? We're just as serious as that board was as we are today. So I was listening to what you all had to say and I'm saying to myself, okay, this is great. And I have to agree with what Paul brought back up a few moments ago. When the letter went out, two additional violations came up after the letter went out. So whether it's like, oh, okay, there's no big deal. They didn't do anything the first couple of times, so they're not going to do anything. Well, that's not true because when your license was issued, that board told you, these are the violations. These things could happen. And it's up to you to make sure that you do what you're supposed to do as a restaurant manager and as an owner. And it's not done. That's all on you. It's not on us. It's on you. So whatever action we take tonight, I think it's done. If we wait around, and I have to agree with Mark a little bit, that if another violation comes from another location, we're going to have to give them the same type of address as we have with the Fusion. And I don't think that's right because they've already had their, they've already had their opportunity when their license was given to them the first time around, when they were told, these are the things you need to follow. And it's not being done. And it's not being done consistently. And that's a concern I have because we all talk about safety. We can't, Paul, that's your big thing about the safety of the people, this and that. Well, this is it. It doesn't get any worse than that. Somebody that's inebriated, gets behind the wheel of a car, that's been overpoured, that's been given too much to drink or is maybe an underage drinker, underage participant, you're asking for trouble. You're asking for trouble. And then who ends up having to clean it up? The guys in blue. The guys in blue. They're the ones that end up having to deal with it. And it's not nice. It's not, it's not, it's not a, oh, hi, Hawaii type of conversation. It's worse than that. And if you ever dealt with a drunk, I can tell you, it's not a pleasant situation. Am I right, chief?
Yeah.
Right. Absolutely. It's not a pleasant conversation.
Okay.
So there it goes. I mean.
Yep.
Do we do something tonight? Yeah, I think we do. Can we put it in abeyance? Yeah, but what does that do to the, you know, to the owner? Okay. He should have an action plan, bring that and let us know that, but we should also have something done tonight.
Paul?
So just one more comment to Steve. So in the event that we established three days as the penalty per violation, I would suggest that the penalty would be increased after notification, speaking to your comment a minute ago.
Yep.
So after notification, it minimum, in my opinion, rises by a day.
Right.
That it would go to four. I mean, it brings that up to seventeen because there were actually three violations in advance of the notification. You know, I am myself very concerned about the notification piece and then the activity. I get the first one, but, so that's just a follow-up suggestion to your comment. In the event that the board decided that three days was appropriate, and I would hope they would think it would be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, after notification, it would be my opinion that that should be increased at minimum by a day, if not two.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that we think for count one, two and three, it should be three days or two days. I'm seeing a nodding head for two.
I'm a three.
A three, a three, a three?
Three.
I would go with three. Okay. So.
Do you want a motion for that?
I need a motion for the number of days for count one, two and three.
So I would move that an establishment that's in violation.
This establishment.
This establishment.
Yes.
We can't state it as a policy.
We can't make, we can't make a general policy.
This establishment.
Good try. Okay. Well, we talked about precedent setting here, so.
You've talked about precedent. Nobody asked me my opinion.
Would you like to share your opinion on that?
No, but you're voting on this violation.
So on, for this establishment, for these three violations.
Okay. So for the first three violations at the Fusion establishment, I would move that we assess a three-day suspension of the liquor license to be held on Friday, Saturday and Sunday evenings.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That carries four, one. Okay.
And for the.
Count five and six.
For the violations on count five and six, I would move that we would increase that violation to four days to be held Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Second.
Okay. So now the decision is.
You'll vote.
Caught, sorry. Keep jumping ahead of myself. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So that carries five, zero. That count five and six, jump to four days. Okay.
And it's the same days, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
It would be.
Thursday.
Thursday through Sunday.
I add Thursday.
If it's three days, it's Friday through Sunday. And if it's four days, it's Thursday through Sunday.
Madam Chair, just for point of clarification, we vote on the number of days. We didn't vote on the application of the days.
Correct. Correct. These are the number of days and the days that we think it should happen.
I stated the days as well. You stated the days as well. I said Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then I said Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yep, he stated the days.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So now we need to decide, are we going to close the hearing and leave it stand at this? Or are we going to keep the hearing open until the owner comes back after having spoken with the police chief and town management and town council on this other steps that are needed to be required and when we might put these in place?
Seeing that the applicant seemed amenable to a nod of the head to maybe meeting with town, I would move to continue the hearing.
Okay.
To the next board of selectmen's meeting.
Which would be April thirtieth.
It wouldn't go longer.
It'd be April thirtieth.
And at that point, we've now, we could, you know, potentially if he comes back with something, we could assess that and then decide on the application of these penalties.
Okay.
Madam Chair, does two weeks allow management to meet with the powers to be vis-à-vis the chief, management and stuff?
Does two weeks give everybody enough time? I'd hate for it to go longer.
Well, I agree, but I just want to make sure we can.
We put the date on. It's our.
We're meeting April thirtieth. April has five Wednesdays.
I thought we were skipping the thing.
No, we're not because of town meeting the following week and we're actually, need to look at our May calendar.
I think it's important to.
But I think we need to.
Two weeks is adequate.
Okay. Okay. So.
Does that need to be an additional type of motion, Lisa?
Well, you just moved to continue to April thirtieth with the expectation that you're going to get a proposal.
Right. So I'd move that we continue this hearing to April thirtieth and I'll do seven twenty. Again, is that a conflict, Susan, with any other hearing that you are aware of? Okay.
I'll second that.
Can I just, before we move on, just a comment because I think we need to make sure that whatever proposal you're coming back with needs to be in hand prior to that because we need to be able to do our due diligence.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yep.
I believe whatever proposal you have in mind will be in place before you come back here. If you have another violation before you come back here, don't. I know I can't say that.
So we had a second.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Okay. So all those in favor of continuing the hearing until April thirtieth at seven twenty with the stipulation that they will be coming back with a plan? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. That carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good to see you. Give my regards to Mr. Kenefick.
Thank you.
I need your autograph. I need your autograph. Beacon.
Okay.
Hey, Lisa. Lisa, is it going to stay up for next Wednesday? Oh, you're going to be gone. That's right.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
She'll come back in a week.
You got two weeks before coming to us, but catch Lisa and, okay.
And the chief.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Well, I think the message was heard.
I think so.
We probably shouldn't talk about this anymore.
No. Okay. Moving on in our agenda, we have no minutes. We have no appointments, town manager or selectman. So we're moving on to old. Oh, you want to put the parking clerk there. Okay. So go ahead. We're going to stick in a parking clerk under town manager.
Not that this comes around very often, but we are in need of a parking clerk, which is an appointment by the board of selectmen by statute. My recommendation is we appoint Tara Ward as the parking clerk. She handles other non, you know, criminal type fines, you know, for the town dog fines and those kind of things. So I would request that the board vote to appoint Tara Ward as the Ashland parking clerk.
Do we need to waive the fifteen days?
Yes, that would be appreciated as well.
Okay. If I can get a motion?
A motion to appoint Tara Ward as our parking clerk.
Waiving the fifteen days.
Waiving, I'm sorry, waiving the fifteen-day standard waiting period.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tara, for stepping up and becoming our parking clerk.
Collect those fines.
I do have to say it was funny because the other morning I was outside of Sunnyside, a week ago Sunday, and there was a car parked right on Front Street, like right across from the street that comes out next to Sunnyside and I almost called the police on them. Concord Street. And it was like, anyway.
I want to put a police officer out there on his Sunday mornings when everybody comes out of the one-way, going the opposite way.
Ooh.
Uh-oh.
Constantly. Constantly.
It's a parking lot, isn't it?
It's a parking lot, but there is a sign, this is one-way.
Yeah. Anyway. Okay. Moving on. Next item on the agenda, to vote and approve and post the annual town election warrant. If you could take us through that?
Okay. So the town election is scheduled for Tuesday, May twentieth from seven AM to eight PM. In your packet is the warrant for special, oh, sorry, for the annual town election. So we need a vote. And then before we leave, we just need everybody to sign the warrant.
Okay. Am I going to get a motion to approve and post?
The move that we prevent the warrant for the annual town election of May twentieth two thousand four as, two thousand fourteen as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unfortunate that there's not a, hardly any contested races.
There are no contested. There are no contested races at this, at this time, in fact-
Unless someone decides to do a write-in, yeah.
At this time, the, I did get an email this afternoon, the Friends of the Library are hosting a candidate's evening on the 14th of May, despite having no contested elections, so.
So May 14th is the candidate's night?
May 14th at the, at the library.
Okay. Did we vote? We did vote, right? No? All those in favor of posting?
We voted aye.
Okay, okay. Guys distracted me. Okay. Moving on. We have the vote and discussion of the field enterprise budget. We had done this before, but there were changes.
There was a question, right, there was a question, Madam Chair, I think from yourself, related to some infield work. The, the answer we provided was correct. That work was, was done previously through contracted services from the Ashland Field Management Group. So after the meeting, I went back and checked with Mr. Minuzian from DPW on his budget creation, and he did not include those costs in his original budget. So the line that's changed is line contracted services. And you'll see back further in the, in the backup for the costs associated with that, work that was done previously by the same folks, cobblestone landscaping as well as Tyler landscaping. So that changed the, the budget amount. So it has already been approved by the school committee at their last meeting.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. If I can get a motion to approve the revised field management budget?
A move, we approve the field enterprise budget as presented.
Second.
Sorry, Paul.
Say it again?
You stepped on Steve, that's all.
No, I think I stepped on, did I step on you?
No, that's okay.
Sorry about that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries five-zero. Okay, moving on, vote to approve fiscal year 2015 town-wide budget.
Okay, so I put in your, in your packet is just the, the, the large sheet, but what we need to vote on tonight is I, I put it on your desk because it was hot off the press, and it's the pound of Ashland fiscal year 2015 omnibus budget. So it gives more of the, more of the breakdown. I know we've, we've seen these different numbers, I think we went through a while back. But now this is in the form that is ready to be presented to, to town meeting. I don't know if there's specific questions that folks have, or, Madam Chair, how you wanted to, to run through the, the actual budget. Certainly, as we put this budget together, you know, this year, since it was a bottom-up review, a zero-based, outcomes-focused approach that, that Michael worked with, all the department heads on, they then established their budget, their goals and objectives, built their budgets around their, those priorities, which is a little bit different. It's not about how much money do you get, it's more about what it is that you want to accomplish or need to accomplish for those that you serve, and then you build your budget around that. Once that was done, they came through one at a time, through my office, we sat down and, and went through each of the, each of the budgets with each of the department heads. And certainly, at the end of the day, you know, our needs really outpace what our budget could, could handle, so we obviously did a lot of trimming to get down to a balanced budget, both the schools and the town. So there's a number of things that we wanted to do that we just weren't able to do. But I think when we make our presentation at town meeting, and when I, I do my State of the Town address tomorrow, I think really the, the message we want to get out is the things that we're actually going to be able to do in increasing services and, and that, with really a modest 3.8% increase on the general government side. The overall budget went up approximately 2.8%. So that's, that's really the story I want to get out, and, and tomorrow I'll, I'll fill folks in as I address, through the camera lens, my State of the Town address and, and the things that we're going to be able to accomplish, some of the investments that we're going to be able to make with really a very modest, you know, 3.8% increase. And, and a large part of that, obviously, is, you know, we have the meals tax money in there, which was part of that increase, as well as we changed council budget this year by reducing our reserve fund. So I would say that we probably took a moderate amount of risk, I think, in, in preparing a budget that allowed us to, to maintain our service with some, some modest enhancements. But we did take some risk, obviously. We reduced our reliance on the stabilization fund, which is a commitment that we had made because we see more normal free cash numbers, I think, in the years ahead. So we did that. We're still working through the police department as we get their manning up, so their salary line was reduced next year, given that they'll take a little bit of time to hire fully, but we'll have to put that funding, you know, make sure that funding's back in there for the, for the following year because they do need to get to, to 100% manning. We also took, you know, some reductions in our utilities, and we're presenting the Amoresco warrant articles at the town meeting, so we've, we've applied 10% savings to our utilities, you know, hoping that we'll get the, you know, the Amoresco contract moving forward for our energy performance contract. So, so that's the, that's the approach we took. I think, you know, folks to realize that as Michael releases the, the budget book, you'll get your copy this evening. We'll have that available for the public on, starting on Friday. And they'll be able to go through and actually see the different things that the departments are going to be able to, you know, to accomplish as they go about their business. So, and they'll see the way that we put the budget together. So it doesn't reflect really anything how it was done in the past, so even though we put in, you know, the FY13 actuals, the FY14, you know, annual town meeting numbers, I think the, the budgeting approach that we took really in FY15, 16, and 17 is where you're really going to see the way that we're doing it now really start to play out. So I try to emphasize to folks to not really try to make a lot of comparisons to, to prior years where the numbers change because it's such a different approach that we used, and one that I think is really, really going to pay off. And the department has really, really worked hard. Michael did a lot of coaching with them, and I think that'll get easier for them as, as we move forward in, in terms of how they really need to establish their, their objectives, their priorities, and then be able to justify their budget around that. So.
Okay. Any questions or comments, specific line items or anything like that? No?
Just one, one comment. I would suggest that we, once our post-town meeting, we, we also do a post-review of the process, how the process went this year relative to, you know, the tri-board meetings and all of that, that type of process, how we can improve going forward with the communications and so on.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I know in our last liaison meeting, there was discussion that we need to make sure that instead of waiting until September for liaison and waiting until March 1st for the first tri-board meetings, we might want to be having them sooner so that there's discussion leading into it rather than at the last minute, like happened with a couple of items this year. So, okay, so no specific questions on the budget? Are we then ready to vote and approve the fiscal year 2015 town-wide budget as presented?
Sure. So a move that we vote to approve and move forward fiscal year 2015 town manager budget. Do I need to include the amount?
I don't think so.
As presented.
As presented.
As presented.
A second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, and that's approved. Please come to the microphone.
And, Dr. Soney. This is going towards the town, town manager, Dr. Skjavi. State of the town tomorrow?
I'm sorry, Michael, I was drinking a drink of water. So I am going to actually tape my State of Town address on WACA TV tomorrow afternoon at 1:00, and it'll begin playing as soon as they're able to, you know, do whatever editing they need to do, so it'll be out on, on the air either, I don't know if they'll have it ready for Thursday, but certainly starting on Friday.
We will be, we will, we will be addressing what happened with the State of the Town address at the end of our meeting.
Okay. That was just making sure about the 48-hour posted, if it's going to be a meeting, public meeting, whatever.
It's not a meeting. It's not an actual meeting that's happening.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Michael just handed out the, the 2015 operating budget and capital plan for, for fiscal year 2015. This will be made available publicly on Friday. The reason for that is we wanted to do the State of the Town address first, have the board do what they did tonight and vote the, the town-wide budget. Then we'll release the, the budget book, the town reports, I'll give you each one after the meeting, and then, you know, we move forward from there. So the public will have opportunities to view both of these documents starting on Friday. We'll have them up online, and we'll have a limited number of, of printed copies as well.
And we're going to have some at the library, so if people want to go to the library and sit there, not to check out, but certainly if they want to sit there and read it.
Library, community center.
Center, okay.
Correct.
Great. Okay.
A lot of work. I want to thank, thank Michael for pulling all that together.
Yes, thank you.
He's the wizard of Excel and, and putting, putting some really great charts together. I think it's going to be a, a really great thing for the community to be able to read this, get smart on it so that when we present the budget at town meeting, they really have a lot of, way more information than they probably ever had before, and can really see how we tied departmental operations to our actual budget development.
Okay. Good. Moving on to our next item. The town manager evaluation. In accordance with its policies, the Board of Selectmen prepares an annual performance evaluation of the town manager. Each member of the board completes his or her own evaluation. This year, the evaluations were completed by all five members of the board. As chair, I compiled the separate evaluations into a compilation, and that is what we're being, was being presented tonight as the individual performance evaluation documents of the selectmen are considered work products and personal documents and are not publicly released. Based on the compilation, Tony received an overall rating of four, which translates to exceeds job standards. The board was pleased with the job Tony has done in his first year, in his first year. The compilation that we're about to review shows that Tony was rated as, at exceed job standards in 40 areas of performance, and was rated as outstanding in eight areas. There are a total of 48 areas that the town manager gets rated and comments on. And as part of his public review, we're going to take you through each of the areas and give you some of the highlights and comments that were given to Mr. Skjavi to help him improve and set goals for the next year. So, to start, I'm going to take you through items one and two, and then each member will go through two. So the first item that he gets rated on is personal characteristics. This covers honest, ethical behavior, fair and equitable manner, dealing with unforeseen issues and problems, resiliency, and creativity. Tony's greatest asset is his ability to look at all aspects of a situation before coming to a conclusion and taking necessary action. Tony's professional approach and attitude is cornerstone with honest and ethical behavior. The benefits of his personal characteristics brings, bring to his positions are clearly evident to the Board of Selectmen and the citizens of Ashland. The second item reviewed was professionalism, knowledgeable and committed to the field of government, local government, seeking to enhance his skills and abilities, actively participating in professional, professional municipal management, and encouraging staff training and development. Though Tony was a non-traditional candidate, he came in with a skill set that translates directly to municipal government. And in accepting this position with the many issues awaiting his attention, Mr. Skjavi has demonstrated a level of professionalism needed to correct, resolve, and beginning a healing process needed for the town to believe in itself again. Joe, next ones?
Thank you. The next issue is related to public relations and communications, such as positive image in the community, open and available to the public in response to the citizens' complaints and requests, communicates effectively with the media, keeps the citizenry informed of the issues of the town. And the comments that were generated were that Tony responds to citizens' concerns and meets with them when necessary. Tony has brought a fresh exciting, excitement to this position that shows his engagement with that through the community. Mr. Skjavi does not sit behind the desk at town hall, he's a hands-on town manager, in which we all like, and he places a high value and importance on public relations and works to ensure the accuracy in reporting of positive representing of the town of Ashland. Next is the board support and relations. That consists of analysts of policies and issues and proposals, implementing policy matters and directives adopted by the board, handles routine requests and tasks to avoid board's actions, keeps the board members informed of issues and activities in town government and throughout the community, and listens and understands the concerns of the board. Some of the comments where Mr. Skjavi acts immediately without delay on all tasks and requests from the board. Tony has developed an ongoing project and issued matrix for the Board of Selectmen and is routinely updated and is briefed to the board regarding status and current items as well as any additions. Tony has taken on the task reviewing existing policies and suggests updates when needed as brought for the new policies that have only strengthened the town. Steve?
Number five is community leadership, and some of the criteria in this category is provides leadership within the community by being visible and approachable, maintains good communication with the business community, supports and recognizes the efforts of volunteer citizens and groups, maintains effective communications with other communities, state agencies, municipal organizations to enhance the town position, maintains effective communication with state and federal elected positions to enhance the town's position. So some of the commentary on this, Tony has clearly engaged with community with every available opportunity. He's been engaged with the Business Association, the condo association, a lot of those efforts.
Read the comments that are here.
Sorry. Sorry, Madam Chair.
No ad-libbing.
No ad-libbing. Tony's Town Manager Coin Program has been an example of his ability to bring recognition to volunteers and other community members and improve communication across the various groups that interact with town government. Mr. Skjavi's always kept the line of communication open and alive between our state and federal legislators. Number six is-
Oh, yeah. Yep, sorry, go ahead.
Correct, am I good?
You're good.
I'm good.
Trying to keep it short, Lisa.
Apparently.
Sorry, go ahead.
All right. So number six is organizational leadership. The criteria, provides leadership, motivation, and support within the organization, effectively delegates tasks and assignments, builds and motivates a team, provides direction, and monitors, adjusts performance as required, recruits, selects, and retains quality personnel, has respect of department heads and members of the organization. Some of the commentary included team building, working on team building, securing, secured a grant for performance management review of departments, focus on department manager, manager ownership, hired new police chief, maintained the timeline, it was publicly announced the first week of September. Process was open and transparent, utilizing both a citizen screening committee, public survey with excellent response, and final interviews open to the public.
Okay.
Next section is personal management. Evaluates performance and takes necessary action to resolve negative results, effectively delegates tasks and assignments, provides leadership in negotiating labor contracts, maintains positive employee relations, and development maintains a personal management system. Some of the comments here, Tony does not appear to be a micromanager, supports staff to take ownership. Tony affected the contracting with the Collins Senator of UMass to perform our HR study, and is in a timeline on track to roll out in January 14. Mr. Skjavi demonstrated over the past 10 months his ability to lead, delegate work, and work with town unions in negotiating contracts during difficult monetary times. The next section would be under financial management. Provides a timely and realistic annual budget proposal, seeks to maximize revenue opportunities through non-tax mechanisms, controls expenditure of town funds to minimize waste and inefficiency, ensures effective control and reports of town financial activity, accurately forecasts and reports the town's financial condition, and prepares future vision and direction. Again, some of the comments under here are, Mr. Skjavi first and most important hiring was assistant town manager, Michael Herbert. Mr. Skjavi surrounded himself with most highly trained intellectual, financial director of town has seen, grants security of direct impact on budget performance, worked with the finance committee to retool the budget presentation, and I believe that in this area, Tony would excel in the groundwork to be very successful in the future years, so.
Okay. Mark?
All right, section nine of the performance evaluation is town operations and infrastructure. These items are, provides effective oversight and coordination of town programs and services, seeks to improve the town's infrastructure, seeks to enhance municipal services and its delivery, promotes automation and innovation in service delivery. Mrs. Skjavi scored exceeds job standards in this section. Comments added to the section right up are as follows. Commissioned study on wastewater treatment plant, created and implemented board and committee database as well as an online meeting notice slash agenda posting. Mrs. Skjavi is working to develop the town's ability to receive state and federal grants to enhance the town's infrastructure. And Mrs. Skjavi is committed to utilizing new technologies for communication. Section 10 of the performance evaluation is planning and organization. The items in this section are, creates and facilitates an environment for long-range and strategic planning, develops proposals for cost-effective reorganization of town operations, establishes appropriate goals and objectives for performance.
operations, establishes appropriate goals and objectives for performance, negotiates and keeps realistic commitments, manages expectations of others appropriately. Mrs. Skiavi scored above, I'm sorry, exceeds job standards in section ten, Planning and Organization. Comments in this section added were as follows. Tony's strategic priorities, goals, and objectives for fiscal years 2013 through 2016 has established the path forward for the Town of Ashland. Tony keeps a running list of issues, objectives, and goals that he manages and keeps the Board of Selectmen up to date on. This being Mrs. Skiavi's first year as Ashland's Town Manager, the expectations from the Board of Selectmen were high. I truly believe his expectations were just as high. Madam Chair.
Thank you. So, with that, the overall rating, as I said, is a four, which translates to exceeds job standards. Some of the overall comments that were given was Tony has hit the ground running on all cylinders and has rapidly brought a new sense of organization and respect to the office of the Ashland Town Manager. He has poised his organization for success and has been a pleasure to work with in just his first year on the job. Tony's first year has been a difficult one, but in our opinion, he has handled situations with a well-thought-out plan that he has executed above expectations. His recognized strengths, exemplary personal characteristics, honesty and integrity, evaluating situations and seeking out the best solutions to move forward. Tony exhibits ambitions yet attainable goals for himself and his team, time he sets aside for citizens to discuss matters and concerns they may have. A couple of areas for improvement, though it's hard to improve on much of this, we would like Tony to improve his knowledge of municipal government, though in the past year it has grown unbelievably. We would like to see Mr. Skiavi out in town, maybe having coffee with people and sitting and talking with them, though he does get out to many events. We'd like to see some improvement on the Asset Maintenance Program, and we'd like to see the relationship with municipal leaders as well as our state and representative, state representatives getting stronger in the second year. So, that is our evaluation. Tony, would you like to comment on the process or the evaluation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you to all five Board members. You know, having been evaluated for thirty straight years, you know, this process, I think, is an excellent one. I mean, the most of the value I get out of it is really the interaction and sitting down and, you know, discussing the activities, your thoughts, your viewpoints of the work that we've done. Certainly, this year has been a steep learning curve. It's one that I've enjoyed very, very much. Still have a ways to go. I mean, I'm probably my biggest critic when it comes to things because I have this tendency to want to make sure that I really have a grasp on everything, and I certainly don't yet. But I think the key to our success, and I'd remiss if I didn't say this, is it's really about the folks that work in the departments, in the staff, and the employees, from Michael and Susan and our office and Diane, keeping things running, keeping me straight on many of the activities that are going on. But that really spreads to all the departments. We've accomplished a lot this year, and really, the credit goes to them for making a lot of this happen because I probably take a little bit different approach perhaps than most just based on my background and wanting to empower our departments, folks that work for me, to let them develop really the ideas and be there to support those ideas through, you know, through fruition, because nobody has a market on good ideas. And I've seen just a tremendous, I think, growth in a lot of the ideas that have come out from other folks in town government to get these accomplishments actually, you know, moving forward, and many of them completed. And we have a big packed agenda, I think, for next year as well. And, you know, we, I'll sort of lay out a few of those tomorrow when I do my State of the Town address, but that's exciting. And I think when folks see that and they get that, they do better, they're challenged, because it's really about making the organization better and successful. And so, that challenge, I think, helps to do that, and then that fits right into, you know, the strategic goals and objectives that we set for everybody. So, looking forward to next year. I'm interested to see what the Board wants us to accomplish, wants me to accomplish over the next year, because I think having those concrete goals help to guide the organization. So, I want to, you know, obviously make sure that we're meeting your expectations for the things that you want to see done in addition to the things that we probably put on our own plate from time to time. I really appreciate over the last year the support from the community, the interaction that I've had, especially with the different boards and committees. There's so many volunteers out there, I mean, really hundreds of them, that make almost everything work, because it's not the eight of us, it's really all of them as well and all the folks that we have. So, that's been a very rewarding experience. They've been very open and welcoming, and, you know, living in town's been a great thing for us as well, so we look forward to our second year. The home is finally a home, so that's good, even though it echoes a lot Monday through Friday, but that's okay.
Okay.
But thank you for all your feedback. It was very appreciated and very helpful.
Good. Okay, so I'm going to sign this page, send it down to everyone to sign, and then we'll pass that to Tony.
Thank you.
Okay. I think I just gave you the, okay. Let me go back to my agenda. Good. Okay. While those signatures are being done, we're going to move on to Town Manager Report, starting with Town Meeting Timeline and Progress.
So, an update on Town Meeting. The warrant is posted online. The warrant tracker has been developed, and we're continuing to populate that as the Finance Committee takes their votes for their recommendations. The Planning Board is meeting over the next few weeks. They'll be reviewing the several zoning articles, so we'll populate the tracker as they make their votes for those different articles. We're currently working on the motions for all of the different articles. We populated the budget, well, I think we finished it today. We populated the budget and the warrant. So, it's coming together nicely. I think really the one that we'll probably bring to the night of Town Meeting, as we normally do, is Article number two, which is the supplemental appropriations for FY14. We'll be tweaking that right up until, you know, probably Town Meeting in terms of any, you know, transfers that we want to request from Town Meeting. So, that's coming along very well, and we're close to completing on that. FinCom has just a couple of recommendations left to go. I mentioned the State of the Town address, the budget book, the Town Report, which we haven't done since 2009, is complete, so we'll roll that out on Friday. And then we have two Town Manager forums set up for the community to come. We'll have folks there representing the different articles so that they can talk about those articles, answer any questions folks may have. Right now, they're scheduled for April 23rd, which is next Wednesday, seven o'clock at the Community Center. And then we'll have on the following week, on May 1st, at 6:30, and that'll be at the Ashland Public Library. So, we did this in the fall one time, and we had probably twenty-five or maybe thirty folks that showed up, so we're hoping folks do that. And I think it's part of our civic engagement philosophy that we want folks to be able to come to Town Meeting, feel comfortable about the articles that they're going to be voting on and requested to be voting on, and they can ask questions, not just of us, but also the folks that are representing those. So, from CPA, from zoning, we'll have Eric Hydam in there as well as Michael and myself to talk about the Amborisco Performance Contract and how that process works so that we have folks well-informed, and they'll have the budget book and other documents to read as well. So, we have that coming up.
Okay.
So, that's where we're at. So, we've so far met all of our timeline, and getting things out earlier the better, and that was a challenge at times, but we're still keeping our promise to the community to make sure the stuff is out in plenty of time.
Great. Okay, next item?
So, the new trash contract, unfortunately, you know, this was supposed to be old news, but now it's new news since the State of the Town is not till tomorrow. But part of what I was going to mention, I will mention it tomorrow as well, but to compliment Michael and Dave Minusian and Dave Miller for renegotiating our contract with Waste Management. Did a great job with a new three-year contract, which will do something that we don't normally, I wouldn't say we don't normally do, but folks don't normally see happen, with an increase in service at a lower cost. And so, they'll see their trash fees reduced for households about $10, and for our seniors about $8 for their trash fees. We're not only reduced the cost of transportation, fuel, tipping fees, but we got an increase in service by two extra yard waste pickups per year, as well as starting a Sharps program, which is a really good thing for us. So, we'll have Sharps kiosks, two of those, and Waste Management is paying to collect those on a monthly basis, which not only increases public safety but encourages folks to properly dispose of needles and syringes. So, just a great job. Michael, thank you very much for working with the team to make that happen. That was a great win for the town.
And where will the Sharps kiosks be?
One at DPW, and I know we talked about the Senior Center.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Well, thank you for that, and congratulations, Mike.
Yep.
Good.
Good job.
Nice, okay. On to the Performance Management Update.
So, just, you know, briefly on the Performance Management Update, it's now called ASSTAT, which I'll introduce to folks tomorrow. So, you know, City Stat Program, Performance Management, now we're called the ASSTAT Program. Started with DPW and the police, we started having our monthly meetings, and then as we go into FY15, there's funding in the FY15 budget to go into Phase Two once the grant we got from Administration of Finance runs out. We'll keep the program going, and we'll start to include more departments in that. And really, the basis in a nutshell is to really use data to drive our decision-making. And so, we've started with police and DPW, and we're already starting to see some results from that, looking at overtime, and then we'll expand to some other areas, fleet usage and that sort of thing. So, these are all part of making sure we're getting good efficiencies out of our operations through these type of programs, so.
That was by a grant, right?
That was by a grant, correct. That's correct, yep.
Good, okay. Any questions on that? No? Okay.
Anything on that?
Any?
No, no, just it's been really eye-opening. I think one of the things that we're finding out is that there's not been much data collection throughout the department, so we're starting to rectify that. And as Tony said, we're already starting to see results, we're starting to see areas where we need to kind of pinpoint and do a little bit more analysis and make some changes in operations and administrative decisions.
Great. And Green Communities update?
So, I just want to update the Board that we've, within the next day or two, we'll be ready to submit our competitive grant for the green communities. It's primarily centered around streetlights, I think about 787, I guess, streetlights that we're proposing that we would replace with LEDs. Significant, significant decrease in energy usage, maintenance, you know, the whole shoot and match. So, in the grant proposal, we've basically have two ways of doing it that we've put out there to DOE, Department of Energy Resources. One would be to include it as part of our performance contract with Amborisco, or we could do it as a standalone. I mean, the best, I think, bang for the buck is to include it with our performance contract, and that's what we're proposing. So, we're ready to submit, and we'll keep our fingers crossed, could be granted up to $250,000 for the town, so.
That'd be really good.
Well, it's in my thing tomorrow. You can wait about how much grant money we brought in. But that's, again, goal number two about using other sources of revenue to generate project-based results has been just a super thing. Outside the Mass Work grant, the Police Department's leading the pack, so, but that's okay. People are taking notice, and they're trying to catch up, so that's good. A little competition never hurt anybody.
Okay, good.
So, very positive for that. And then just lastly, Madam Chair, I think I put in front of everybody, we did get another donation for our AEDs from the Bose Corporation for, I believe, $500. I would request that the Board approve the acceptance of a gift of $500 from the Bose Corporation to go towards deferring the town share of the new AEDs that we received.
If I can get a motion to approve this donation?
Sure. Move that the Board accept a donation of $500 from the Bose Corporation with our thanks to Bose and our thanks to Officer Ed Berman for his work on securing this.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Ed, for getting that, and thank you to Bose. Okay, so, before I, was there anything on the action item review that you wanted to update?
I had nothing new on that.
Nothing new? Anybody else on the action item review question? Okay, so...
I'm sorry, yes, there is one. We voted and we passed the Selectmen Scholarship.
Yes.
Okay, because I wasn't sure if you'd hold that off and send it out to the high school.
You should send it to the high school. We should get it posted on the website, and we should...
You need to get the final version, I can post it.
Yeah, okay, you can get the final...
I sent it to Sue that night. I emailed it to her.
It's probably in my inbox.
So, yeah, because if we can get that up and get it up on the website and talk about the fact that the scholarship is open to any high school senior who is graduating whose family or they reside in Ashland, they do not have to graduate from Ashland High School, they just have to reside in Ashland. Okay. So, two things. So, one, Susan had sent us an email regarding the island signs, and we're not going to discuss it tonight, but I want you to start thinking about it, because I know we'll probably be getting some input from the downtown Ashland people, and, but I didn't want to have a discussion about it. It was sort of late to get it on the agenda, so that'll be on next meeting's agenda. We need to talk about the actual signs, how we want to police them if we want to, or what we want to do with that whole program. Mark?
Do you want the downtown collaborative folks to come, or you're happy to have me represent them?
Well, you sit on that committee, so, I mean, unless you think someone from that committee would be worthwhile to have them, but I think if you have the information, I don't know that we'll be taking a vote, but we certainly need to start having a discussion as to what we're going to do about them and maintain them or do something different or how we're going to do that. The other thing, again, before Board Reports, I just want to say, so Tony keeps alluding to his State of the Town address. The first State of the Town address was supposed to have happened last night when it was being planned, it was originally planned for March 16th. That, and that's actually for you, that got changed because we couldn't tie it in correctly with the budget and the timeline, so it got moved to April 15th. It wasn't until about a week or so, week and a half before, that it was noted that April 15th was the second night of Passover. Originally, we were going to move forward with our sincere apologies, that, you know, we weren't trying to be uninclusive of everybody, but unfortunately, at the last minute, we were notified that certain, you know, Board members, different groups, were not going to be able to be in attendance, and we felt that it was important that if we were going to do a first State of the Town, it really needed to include everybody. So, we have canceled the State of the Town. Tony will be recording it on WACA TV, and they will be showing his address that he would have given, and he will also have the information available at the forums that are coming forward on April 23rd, which is next Wednesday, and then on May 1st, which is a Thursday, and that will then lead us into Town Meeting on May 7th. Okay?
Madam Chair, will you be doing your speech on cable as well?
I was not planning on doing my five minutes of speech.
I just asked, because I know you put time and effort into it, and I just, I think the Board wanted to know whether, well, I did.
It might come up Friday.
Yeah, we still do our around-the-clock, so maybe I'll bring up some of the information there in that. I think it's important that Tony gets his message out, because he has a lot of good things to tell the town, and I think it's important that he does his State of the Town, so. And we look forward to be able to coordinate one for next year. Okay, Board Reports.
I have nothing new to add, Madam Chair.
Okay. Paul?
I have, I just want to say, I had the opportunity yesterday to attend the tribute in Boston. I went behalf of the Board, and it was amazing. It was just unbelievable. So, I just, to all those people, the speeches, the survivors, and it was just so tastefully done, and, you know, I think unless you were in the room, it was hard to feel that. I was talking to Karen earlier, she was attended as well, and it was amazing how much everybody came together and the things that were said, and how much strength people have gotten from the things that have happened to them. So, I just, you know, I just felt very honored to be able to be there, and I just wanted to kind of mention that.
Well, thank you for going and representing us. Okay. Steve?
Well said, Paul. Just a couple things quickly. Attended the Ashland Educational Foundation Gala this past weekend. Had the pleasure, the honor of sitting at a great table along with Tony and Debbie Skiavi, Michael and Beth Herbert, Yolanda and Rich Greaves, Karen Spilka and Joel Loetherstein, and Bonnie and I, and it was a great night for all, and a lot of fun was had.
That's great.
And then I do a shout-out for the Ashland Bike Club, which I am a card-carrying member of, just joined recently. And so, I took my first trip with the club, and it's a great organization, it's very inclusive, it's open to everybody, conducive to families, and it was a lot of fun, so a shout-out to the Bike Club. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Joe?
Just quickly, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Passover that are in the process of celebrating their holiday, and to the Christians that are coming up, Easter Sunday's coming up, so happy Easter to all you, or the Italians, Bonapasca. And I'd just like to say that we had an event come through town, and Mr. Skiavi was there. The two brothers that lost, each one lost a leg, came, and their entourage walked through town, and I have to tell you, it was holding my grandson, and you could, it was incredible because just watching them and seeing what they went through, knowing what they had gone through to get to where they are today. knowing what they had gone through to get to where they are today, it was an incredible sight, and they stopped and talked to everybody. Matter of fact, they had, they've written a book, and I think they donated a couple of books to the library, so those books...
One, one book, yeah, to the library, yeah.
Is at the library, so take a look at it. It's wonderful. If not, go buy their book and help support them, because a lot of the money that is raised with that book goes to the One Fund. So, kudos to them, and I wish everybody well on Monday. That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, great. I would like to echo your wish of happy Passover to those celebrating Passover, happy Easter to those who celebrate that. We have our Runners Breakfast on Saturday morning at eight...
Nine.
Nine o'clock at TJ's, so some of our runners are coming. Hopefully, some of you can be there. I know I plan on being there. We have the marathon coming through town on Monday. Please go and enjoy it. Just be aware of some of the new restrictions. Do what you can. One of the things that I like that I'm seeing is if you see something, say something. I think we need to be aware that there's a lot going on, and we want to still support and still have fun, because I know for many of us, it has been a tradition to go and watch the marathon, so. On that note, I would like to say thank you for watching, and we will see you on April thirtieth, if not before. If I can get a motion to adjourn, please.
Submissed.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for watching, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Take one and pass it down. This is your...